Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, September 17. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thanks for joining us. We've got some good stuff going on tonight. We're going to take things out of order so that we can get down to the fun stuff and release everybody and they don't have to sit through the part of the agenda that's like watching paint dry. So first up, you are here for the remainder of it. You don't just excuse. You need to watch the paint dry. So first up, we have the appointment of Colby Silva as Town of Hanson firefighter. Chief O'Brien?
So good evening, very pleased, thank you for allowing us to do this tonight. Just to give you a little background about Colby, so she's here with her children, Emma and Gabe, who will be doing the penning for her tonight. Her parents, Lisa and Paul Eldridge, there we are, right over there. And her husband, Justin Silva, Justin, right, I probably said one of them there. Justin's actually an avid firefighter. So Colby came to us via helicopter. Her father-in-law, I don't see him here, he actually is retired, Clinton Fire Chief. So firefighting runs their blood. Colby is actually an RN. She was an ER nurse. She was born being an ER nurse. So she became a kayak cat lab nurse. That was her all the time. She liked to be a paramedic. She likes the excitement of it. But a couple of things with Colby, since she started just over a year ago with us. Colby's actually very successful. She came to me because, as you know, I'm trying to do continuity operations. I'm like, we need a grant write-up. Colby said, I want to come to your grant write-up and I want to write a grant for a cancer screening for the fire service. So Colby applied for a citizen firefighter grant for a little over $50,000. It is a nationwide competitive grant and she was actually awarded the grant for a $50,000 for cancer screening with other departments. So it's a little bit about Colby. So Colby, may I be comped?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe you can help me too. Beth is just swinging in and then they continue the ad-riding.
Madam Chair? 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 Madam Chair?
Congratulations, Colby.
Madam Chair? May I just say one thing?
Yes.
I would actually like to thank Colby, who assisted me after our Maytown meeting. I was very ill and she sat in the back of the ambulance with me and really made me feel very comfortable in a very uncomfortable situation. So thank you from the bottom of my heart and welcome to Hanson.
And appoint Daniel McHale as Town of Hanson firefighter.
Yep. So Dan McHale comes to us from, he was born in East Bridgewater. He actually lives in Mossfield right now. His grandma Dan's here and his parents ran the Shell. Are here with us tonight. His mom will be pinning his badge and his younger sister Emily. So Dan was a brand new paramedic when he came to work with us. So he also chose, and he was working for Brewster Ambulance at the time, to work for Brewster. And it's ironic because I think Dan sees as much action in Hanson and things going in Hanson as he does in Brockton, believe it or not. So he's amazed at what he's seen. He's an excellent firefighter, excellent addition to his shift. His shift is they gel with training constantly. They're constantly doing training and coming up with all kinds of different questions and ways of doing things, which is excellent. So, so all right. So Dan, come on up.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Phil. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I have to tell you, it was wonderful to watch your daughter watch and you get paid. It was awesome.
Very special to me, too.
And just real quick, please.
Oh, please.
So I just want to do a little recognition. This is actually the first time that I have had firefighter experience since I've been Fire Chief. But I actually want to thank the parents. You guys did phenomenal job raising both these individuals because they are both hard workers and give 110%. They've already gone and taken classes on their own and asked about it this weekend. You guys went and did virtual firefighting class, too. So they're all the time asking, hey, can we go class? Can we do this? Can we do this? So kudos to you.
We just want to thank all of you guys. We say it, we may not say it enough. We appreciate everything you do. We're so proud to have you work for the Town of Hanson, every single one of you. Thank you very much. Nicole, we're going to take a recess, okay? All right, and we are back. And since we're back, Mr. Hill, may I prevail upon you to read the public announcements in upcoming meetings?
Sure. It seems very short today.
Which is a blessing.
What is it?
It's a blessing.
Yeah. We're looking for citizens attached to be members of the following committees: the Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Cultural Council, Economic Development Committee, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Recreational Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, and last but not least, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-mass.gov, or by calling the Select Board Office at 781-293-2131. In the following upcoming meetings, the Select Board Meeting is on September 24, 2024. The Special Town Meeting is October 7, 2024. And then the following Select Board Meeting is October 15, 2024. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is ratified contract for new highway director, Richard Jasmine. As you will recall, I believe it was our last meeting, we met with Mr. Jasmine, we provisionally appointed him pending a successful Corey background check and reference check. I'm happy to report that those were positive and successful. So here we are with an employment contract between Richard Jasmine and the Town of Hanson. And it is effective, well, really, he's...
He started yesterday, September 16.
Yesterday, right? Okay. So I will entertain a motion and then I'll start to calculate this for execution.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Okay.
All right, great. That brings us to requests from Town Clerk's Office to approve early voting hours for October 19 to the 26th, as printed, October 19, 9 to 3, October 21, 9 to 4, October 22, 9 to 7, October 23, 9 to 4, October 24, 9 to 4, October 25, 9 to 12, October 26, 8 to 3, and then October 28 to November 1, according to the following: October 28, 8 to 5, October 29, 9 to 7, October 30, 8 to 5, October 31, 8 to 5, November 1, 8 to 12. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I ask why there are two groups?
It's two separate weeks.
Yeah, I don't think it's two continuous weeks.
What do you say?
There's a couple of days in between.
You threw me off there, Mr. Hill. All right. I know I did say any further discussion. I just didn't expect any. Okay. So we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. 86 Roller Coaster Road grading work. Ms. Green, I saw a letter that came in yesterday from our town planner, Mr. DeFrayis. And quite honestly, I was trying to catch up on everything and I feel like some of the finer points may have been missed in my reading of that. So, Mr. DeFrayis, may I prevail upon you to take the Inquisition Table seat and lay it up for us?
So, Tony DeFrayis, town planner. So what you have before you is a plan for 86 Roller Coaster Road. It's a single-family dwelling and the location of the dwelling is right up against a lodged hill. So there was an abutter who had a large piece of property which included the hill. These folks had, this, these folks had, their property was smaller than what you see on the plan.
Okay.
So that particular abutter divided up his property and I guess, working with his neighbors, sold them some parcels so they would wind up having larger properties. This particular resident is looking to now to expand their backyard. So to do so, they're going to be cutting into the hill.
Okay.
What the engineer was concerned with is Hanson has an earth removal general bylaw.
Yep.
And they were, the question, they had come to see me and their question was, does this trigger an earth removal bylaw? Does this trigger an earth removal permit? So they submitted a plan, they submitted what they're doing, and I don't believe that, what I told them was, well, look, I don't think this triggers the earth removal bylaw because that tends to be for a lot bigger projects. This is just for a case of a backyard. But what you could do, or what you should do as a matter of procedure, is send a letter to the Select Board, send them the plan, explain what you're doing, and ask them to waive those requirements of the earth removal bylaw and just allow this to fall under the building inspector's purview. You know, Section 1A of Article 3-12 says, "No person shall remove any soil, loam, subsoil, sand, gravel, stone, or rock from land not in the public domain without a written permit from the Select Board." So I just wanted to have them come before the board because inevitably, once they stop making changes to their backyard, they are going to remove material out of the hill. And people see trucks and they're going to say, what's going on out there? Is there an earth removal? What's going on? They should get a permit. One of them is a matter of procedure to have an explanation to the Select Board so everyone knows what's going on. So this is just them expanding their backyard. They're going to put up a, what they call a Betty Rock retaining wall, which is just giant blocks, they're two by two by four, they get stacked. The building inspector's also seen this. He doesn't have any issues. So what they're just asking is for you not, for you to waive the requirements of that permit and just allow this to fall under the purview of the building inspector in his...
Well, does it require a permit? It says it doesn't.
Yeah, it's interesting because when I read your, when I read your letter, in my very simple way of looking at the earth removal, really, I thought it was more applicable and sort of like, where we've seen it come up in the past was the, there was a cranberry bog owner who was doing like, just basically eviscerating the cranberry bog and removing earth. And, you know, obviously to the detriment of all the homes that would be around there because that would completely change the drainage, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah.
The first section says, you know, "From land not in the public domain without a permit from the Select Board." You know, so...
So this is just being, making sure that it would be...
I didn't thought it either.
Yep, okay, all right.
That's what it's...
And are you here for that or are you here for...
I am, yes.
Oh, okay. I just was hypothesizing.
Yeah.
Are you an abutter?
No, I live at 86.
Oh, you're the person who's wanting to do this? Okay, all right. So, yeah, I, does anybody have a problem with just waiving this?
No, I have no problem with it at all. I lived on a property that was a terrible hill and my father, terrorist and terrorist and terrorist because that's the only way you could use it.
Yeah, yeah.
I personally have no problem doing it. I just worry, it's obviously not near, near wetlands, it would be having a different discussion.
Correct.
And it's, you mentioned about affecting other neighboring properties. We're pretty sure this won't change anything as far as water movement within, that type of thing. Just sitting here at the desk here doesn't...
No, the, the wall, the way they're having, the way they have it constructed, it's sort of three-sided. And also, that hill is all sand. The ground line table is very deep there.
So it's, that you would look into the hill and you'll see the three sides.
Correct. They're expanding the, they're expanding their yard by about 15 feet. At the top of the wall, there'll be a fence and then they, the engineer is calling for erosion control blankets. So they're taking care to apply good engineering practice for the design that they're doing.
Is it sand, sand, or is it beach sand?
It's...
Seriously, my, my, the hill behind my parents' house was a sand dune. Beach rocks and everything.
I wouldn't say it's a sand dune.
There's a difference in sand. I worked for a sand and gravel truck driver.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that it's sand dune sand.
Yeah.
But it's, you know...
So it's got a little bit more structure than beach sand. Beach sand is bad.
Yeah. Let's put it this way, it's the kind of, it's the kind of material that if it was a cranberry grower, they'd go, I mean, there's a lot of money.
They'd go after it, yeah.
There's a lot of money in that hill.
I got one problem here. 86 or 80?
86.
Okay.
86, okay.
Because our stuff says 80.
That's an error, that's an error in my mind.
Okay. All right. So I will entertain a motion to waive the applicability of the earth removal standards, but still require that the applicant comply with all building codes and work with our building inspector.
So moved.
For 86 Roller Coaster Road.
Second.
Okay, great. All in favor? Okay, great. All right, thank you. Thanks for doing the right thing and, as usual, thank you for helping us through these uncharted waters, Mr. DeFrayis.
Is it sand or is it...
All right. Appoint, appoint Edwin Hill as alternate member to Zoning Board of Appeal. Oh.
No, I don't think so. I think we'll put it on something next week, maybe.
Okay. So if we go on the Wayback Machine, our last meeting, Ed had very graciously offered to temporarily fill the void for the Zoning Board of Appeals because there are hearings that cannot happen without three members. And if they don't happen, then it could put us in a position where the applicant would be seen as de facto having their application approved even though that might not be what our intention was. And despite us trying to pull in all types of favors and asking everybody that we knew whether anybody would apply for the Zoning Board of Appeals, we have not been successful. We had the good fortune of having Matt Proventure at our last meeting and he gave us some good advice about Ed reaching out to Ethics just in honor of an abundance of caution to make sure that there wasn't any concern. So, Mr. Hill, did you want to just give us an update on that?
Yes, I did reach out to Ethics and they called back to me. I talked to the lawyer, deep into my, the various positions I hold, especially at the Town, and they didn't see any conflict of interest. And, you know, I was as open as could be and they, nobody thought there'd be any reason to question it.
Okay. So with that, I will entertain a motion to appoint Ed Hill as the alternate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Can I vote?
Yes.
Of course.
Hopefully, your voting is, since you're already volunteered. Except Percy Child's resignation from the Hanson Public Library. I will entertain a motion.
So, second, with regard to...
All in favor? Discuss Town Council rate increase, effective FY '26. Ms. Green?
All right. So we did receive a letter from me, Tyler Mencosta, who are our Town Council, dated September 9, just informing us that as of, for fiscal year '26, which will begin on July 1, 2025, they will increase their rate $5 to $190 per hour, which actually is still very low compared to what some of the other towns are paying for Town Council.
It is, but I do recall at one point, and she might deny it, but I'm pretty sure we've got this on tape, Ms. Federoff suggesting that there might also be a flat fee arrangement that we could enter into. I was never super clear about whether that would mean a decrease in responsiveness, whether we would get like back-of-the-house help instead of front-of-the-house help. Like, I'm not sure what, like, why wouldn't we want to do a flat rate instead of, you know, getting paid, paying by the hour? Can we inquire before we adopt this increase on whether that is available and what they think the difference in cost would be for us?
I will send through the email now.
Do you guys agree with that?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, we want to know difference in cost, difference in service, like, what...
Is this in, in connection with like a contract that we, that we signed?
I don't believe we ever signed any contract with them.
No, we don't, this is one of the exceptions, like engineering, Town Council. We've gone out to, we've gone out for like competitive analysis, but we don't, we don't sign a contract with them. So, I mean, it's at will, if you will, like, we could just be like, yep, we're not paying the extra $5 an hour, we're moving on, if we wanted to.
No, I just didn't know if this like triggered like an opportunity for us to like shop around and...
It could. Do you guys want to do that? I mean, that's a possibility, too. Do you guys want to, you know, just do a little RFP? I mean, you know, go, take, take a look. You know, in the past, we have had a separate council for labor versus town business. I would be hesitant to change that now because we've really gotten Kate and Jane up to a point where they understand all of the labor union stuff and it's tricky to switch midstream with that. But, but, I mean, we can always ask. I think it's always healthy to RFP on these things. You don't want to get taken for granted that you're always going to be with this firm, that they really don't have to show you their best and brightest and, and all of that. And again, I'm not saying that's happening, but it can tend to with vendors. So what are your thoughts on that? When do you think you might pull that little rabbit out of the hat?
We probably, we can probably work on that after Town Meeting.
Okay.
Getting RFP out there.
Okay.
I don't think it would hurt. I think anytime there's like some type of substantive change, we should do, do what we can on our side to see if that's in the best interest of us.
Why not kick the tires? Yeah. Okay, great idea. Thanks, Mr. Weeks. And I don't think we need a vote because we're just, it's a consensus and, you know. And I think similar to what we've done in the past is we've tried to winnow it down. When I say "we've tried to winnow it down," I really mean you in the royal sense, to three, you know, kind of, and, you know, but make sure it's apples to apples because the devil is in the details on the way that those, the pricing is constructed.
Right, yes.
You know, and, you know, and I, we don't want to be getting somebody fresh out of law school for the price that we're paying, you know...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
These guys. So, all right, you know what to do. You've got your emergency orders on that. Okay, dissolve private road oversight committee and then similarly dissolve street safety and development committee. Ms. Green?
So Chief Mix has noted that neither one of these committees have met, I think he said in years.
Ten years.
Ten years, almost a decade. There was a question of whether they still existed, whether there were still members out there, and it was suggested that they dissolve both the committees.
Well, I do appreciate that, but I think in light of the fact that this evening we've just appointed a new highway supervisor, director rather, I would really like to get his thought on that because I see these committees as, although they haven't met, and we know that that's been a revolving door, you know, that department. So I think we really haven't had a steady person at the helm that was necessarily focused on these issues. I, I, I'm hesitant to disband them because I think they offer an opportunity, if they were used properly, for us to have, citizens have a voice in a direct line with the highway about things that they're concerned about. I don't know what you guys think about this, but...
I don't think it's going to affect us one way or another.
Yeah.
I think it's an opportunity. We'll just circle back to it and...
Okay. Yeah, so if you can just, you know, like, throw, mention it to Richard, you know, and I like where Chief Mix is going, you know, we clearly need fewer committees and not more.
What he's saying, too, I mean, they haven't met in over a decade.
They haven't met, but you could say, but there's a lot of other committees that like, they're only needed when they're needed. So it may be that, I think what's happening, to be honest with you, with the street safety and development, the street safety, I don't think people even ever knew that there was a committee. So what I think is happening is people are just going right to the chief or they're going right to highway.
How do you even get on it?
Well, we would appoint them.
No, but it's not even like on our, part of our weekly announcements.
That's probably why they haven't met.
But that's my, that's my point. So like, if people don't know, like, give it a shot. Do we have new leadership? And if the person thinks that it's not in the best interest, then we'll reevaluate it.
I mean, Ms. Green, I guess, get us a description of what the duties are and then talk to Richard and see what he thinks.
Okay.
I have, I think that if you talk to the highway director, he's going to say no because it basically, it's a, it's somebody that's going to step in and be a middleman that a lot of highway directors wouldn't want. Similar to how, I'm thinking the drainage committee, that's the same thing. The drainage committee used to have power, but it was, was taken away by the highway to prior...
You know what's going to happen, though? The minute we take a vote to take it away, the highway director's going to say, you know, it'd be a great idea. We had a committee that gave voice to the people and then we have to create one.
Yeah.
Just give them an opportunity then. If this is no longer...
Absolutely.
And God knows, we could have used that private road oversight committee several times in the last year. Because we had a lot of private road issues, if they had only existed. Okay. So we'll take that under advisement. Request by Hanson Troop 68 to reserve Thomas Mill for Saturday, November 2 for its annual scouting for food event. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Great. Request by Hanson Troop 68 to reserve Town Hall Green for Monday, November 4 for its flag retirement ceremony in honor of Veterans Day. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? And let me just tell you, Troop 68, I like your planning in advance. Kudos to you. Good modeling. Okay. And then request by Holy Apostles Parish to reserve Town Hall Green for Saturday, October 12, 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. for its annual public prayer. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Great. Ms. Green, discuss October Town, Special Town Meeting. Now, the last time we met, we didn't have all members present and so we, those of us that were here did not want to be presumptuous and decide what we were recommending and what we weren't. We also did not yet have the FinCom recommendations. And to that end, I would like to recognize Ms. Bar, we've got here this evening, from FinCom to chime in, I guess, when we need you, right? Okay, hopefully, we won't get into fisticuffs tonight. I'm just, I'm just joking. But maybe philosophical fisticuffs. Okay, so let's just jump into it, shall we? Lynn, are you all ready for us to run through the recommendations?
I am.
Okay. So Article 1. We've placed...
Okay.
All right. Anything we should know?
No, I was just, I was just looking for the recommendations.
Okay.
Everything's placed.
Everything is placed, okay? But we didn't want to recommend because we wanted all of the Select Board available, you know, here to make those decisions. It just didn't feel right and so we didn't...
So we don't have to go through and explain every single...
We're not going to.
Okay.
No. So, Article 1. We've placed... All right, anything we should know?
No, I, I was just, I was just looking for the recommendations.
Okay.
Everything's placed.
Everything is placed, okay? But we didn't want to recommend because we wanted all of the select board available, you know, here to make those decisions. It just didn't feel right and so we didn't.
So, we don't have to go through and explain every single...
We're not going to.
Okay.
No. At least I, I don't even have the voice to do it, even if I wanted to. So, you've, you've hit the lottery tonight. Unless somebody has questions, then we will, but... All right, Article 1, unpaid bills. I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Does it need to be voiced or does it?
No. Article 2, um, various operating budget, um, things as printed. I will entertain a motion to recommend.
I want to ask the question. Restore highway and administrative union hours. Is that where the, um...
Yes, that's in here.
Yeah, yeah. So, this is bringing back what was lost.
If town meeting votes that they want to do that.
Using free cash.
Yep. Now, I will note that this would be one where I would have anticipated that, um, FinCom, uh, would perhaps not, uh, be in favor of this.
We voted 3, 1 not to recommend.
Correct. And I think it's because it's a use of free cash, but I, I, for one-time expense. I mean, it's the same. I think it's essentially what you guys said at the last town meeting and now we're doing it again.
I would make the recommendation that we defer to town meeting. Personally, I don't want to spend free cash that we, that is going to be hard. I want the taxpayers to decide what to do with their money.
Well, I have, I have a little bit of a different take on this. This is combining four different, very different...
Yes, it is.
Items and, um, I don't like that. I want, I'm all about line items, you know, one at a time. I want to see the, uh, hours restored to our town services if we can do it and if the town so warrants, we should be able to do that without vacation buyback provisions and supplemental appropriations and select board education stipends.
Right, but they can do it line, you know, somebody can say, I object to line item number 1.
No, but she's saying people are more likely to say, but just no or yes and, and the devil's in the details. That's...
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay. What?
They, they voted each line item. It was a thing both for line item.
Is there, do we have an opportunity here to say like Article 2, Article 2 and then Part A and Part B or something so that...
Yeah, we, we can actually just, uh, we can, so, so Article 3, um, how we have the explanations and then we have line 1, line 2, we can certainly do that. Or we can break these out into each individual articles.
Or, or could we ask somehow vote four times on this one article?
He, uh, we can and also Sean will go through on, by line and say, does anybody want to hold?
Right, but then they've got to hold.
And then they have to hold and then we go back, but to Ann's point, that doesn't, these are chunked together, so if, for instance, like, let's say, I, I want to restore the highway and admin hours, but I don't want to do all the rest of the stuff. There really isn't an opportunity, an easy opportunity for somebody to do that at town meeting.
Right, that's what I'm wondering if, if there was a way, I'm not sure there is, but if there was a way to, to force a vote four times.
I think what we could do, I mean, the vacation buyback and I don't know how you'd chunk it out. I honestly, I think the restoring hours is, needs to be on its own. I don't know, the other ones I don't know, but that one needs to be on its own somehow. I don't know how. If, if you guys want to do like, uh, Article 2A and 2B or whatever it is.
If you look at Page 3, for Article 3, usually like something like that.
I don't think that's going to do it because we kind of have the same thing, isn't, don't we have?
Yeah, so what we can do is we can, what we can do is we can just break them out in, into each individual article and that way people can choose. We can add articles.
Do we want to be doing that?
Is that, do we want to do that? I feel like this is a Rubik's Cube at this point. That's why I was suggesting the 2A, 2B, 2C, like, keep it right there, da-da-da-da-da, then you're not renumbering anything. We don't have, um, you know, unintended consequences with handouts or anything else. My head's exploding at the possibilities, quite frankly.
Yeah, we, we can do 2A, 2B, 2B. We, we can do it, we can do it that way.
Right now, we have 21, 22, 23, 24.
Was this how it was presented the, uh, the last time we voted on it?
No.
It was different things that were jumbled together last time, if you recall, and that was a problem.
I don't recall, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, that, that was a problem.
It wasn't jumbled this way.
Yeah, it wasn't this way, it was a different way.
Yeah.
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 Okay, so, all right, so then, um, to, to your point, or somebody's point, I don't know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to address everybody's points. Why don't we, since we know we're going to break it out by, um, line item, um, for the purposes of this discussion, um, line item 1, um, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Oh, okay, do you want all of them to be deferred to town meeting?
I think anything that's related to free, I, I personally will not make a recommendation for anything that's related to free cash. I'm going to defer to town meeting.
I kind of agree with him, but at the same time, I want it known that, I mean, I'm supporting that, but...
Can we do both? Can we recommend but defer? You know what I mean? It's like we...
No, you've got to pick a lane, dude. You either defer or you, or you...
We defer because, but as, I defer as a selectman, but as a member of the town.
I personally plan on speaking on some of these things on town meeting floor, but as, as a person that, like, my support of, of the people deciding where their money go is by making a vote last time to place this article in the first place. The other part of, of it, me speaking as an individual member is what, how I'm going to speak about this on the floor. In this, I want the people to decide where their, where their money goes because I, I have been against using free cash to balance the vote since they want...
Which is what we did the last time. The last time we said, the last time, uh, it doesn't mean we have to do it this time, but the last time we did say we're deferring to town meeting to make this decision.
That's fine, I, I'll defer to town meeting.
That doesn't mean you don't have your own personal opinion, you know?
I need my opinion known, so...
Okay, so I will entertain a motion then, based on this conversation, um, to defer, um, to town meeting.
So moved.
All four of them.
All four, yep. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
First, I ask who brought these articles.
This way.
They're not, I mean, they're proposed by our, by our, um, office. So, there's Lisa's proposals. We're not saying that we're not, it's the funding that we're questioning. It's, we know that the union that's been part of the negotiations is that they want to have their hours restored. We know that there's been a downside, um, you know, with, um, quite an uproar about the transfer station being closed. It's caused issues with the admin union. Some of those things, we had no way of forecast. We didn't know how it was going to play out in the union. So, um, yeah, I don't, it's the use of free cash that's the problem, not the actual item itself.
So, what does this do to the finance committee's recommendation if we're changing it?
It doesn't do anything.
They're going to change it there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're breaking it out and...
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're fine. Yep.
They didn't, they didn't vote for this one, but they voted for the next one.
Yeah.
And I have one little question and it's just a minor thing. It was a little confusing when I looked at this. I didn't look at the word "not." It said, "Finance Committee not recommend." And oh, they recommended 3 to 0 because everywhere else it's recommend, except for not recommend. And I don't know, does that cause confusion? What is it? What?
When, there was a previous warrant I worked on and I did recommend 0, 3, and Mr. Sullivan said, "No, it's not recommend 3, 0." So, I switched it and that's why I do it this way.
Can we bold "not"? Can we do something to make it stand out that, that the way they did vote? You know what I mean? It's to be truthful and not, not, not truth, this is not, not truthful.
You'll, you'll be surprised. That's why I wanted to, to wait until everybody was here because if you're, if you're only showing partial, committees partially voting or you see not, people are going to jump up. They're going to catch that. Historically, it's always been that way. They'll go up every single time and say, for finance committee. This is why I'm, I'm kind of doing it, I'm saying the things that I'm saying the way I am because they'll go to the finance committee and say, "How many times did you not recommend something?" And I want to hold every single one of those things. And then we'll, we'll have to go through and just make sure because they're going to want to know why. So, people will catch up on it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And we can always ask on the floor because we know here why and we can preempt the question and say, can the finance committee just, you know, if you didn't recommend something, can you just let us know why? So, they know the rationale behind it. So, we can, we can do it a couple of different ways.
You don't like being the bad guy.
Right, exactly.
We are.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. I think you do when you do diligence and you're doing the best you can. That's really what it is.
We may need to revisit vacation buyback because that's an area that, um, does create shortfalls in line item budgets for employees when they buy back by vacation that they haven't used. I mean, it's, it's in the contracts, it's in the bylaw that vacation buyback isn't allowed, but what happens is that causes a shortfall in those line items. So, that's why that line, that line was created to, um, prepare for vacation buybacks, which, which happens when people, um, leave, uh, and also if someone does not take all their vacation time, um, they are allowed to buy back a certain amount. They tend to buy back the maximum amount, so, um, that, that causes, that causes a shortfall in the line items. Well, our town accountant brought it up that we should start, um, putting a line item for vacation buyback because in the past it has caused shortfalls. So, this is a way to prepare.
He suggested like on a sort of like steady basis instead of, because we've had cases, literally cases where like, say, a firefighter will leave and we owe $150,000, you know, like, like, that's an extreme case, but it's happened. So, his idea was just to start putting this away so that we're preemptively, we've got that money.
But it should be done more after this time. It should be done at the May town meeting yearly, once a year. Is that the idea?
I think he thought twice a year, we should be doing it.
We, we, we should revisit to see what the balance is.
Yeah.
And then replenish going on, but this is, this is just establishing that line.
Because I think we have something on the bylaws says we're not supposed to be doing money-related, finance-related articles.
By the way, I think this needs a much better explanation because like that wasn't really intuitive. Okay. Article 3. But I will entertain, this isn't coming from free cash, so...
School stabilization.
Yeah. Okay, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second, but I, I...
With regret?
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just...
I know.
You know that I'm very puzzled by this whole free cash of this, now, in this. We had two lines there that totaled an awful lot of money that was certified. We're, we're killing ourselves trying to maintain what we have and then we come up with that. It just doesn't, to me, it doesn't make any sense. Now, this school stabilization, this is all for the school. I can make, I can, this, this budget makes sense to me, but where did that money come from? Just appeared out of thin air?
Well, I think that's a conversation we need to have with our town accountant.
I think it is too. Okay.
No.
No, you don't have to do that.
Um, all right, so was that...
I mean, a motion that hasn't been seconded.
Second, okay.
I'll second this. I sent a little correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then Article 4, we discussed this in wage and personnel. It's primarily the Information Technology Director. And that was recommended by FinCom. I will entertain a motion to...
Second.
And, uh, we're not leaving Kate's comment in there, right? Okay. Can we please go through and make sure that all of those little asides aren't there? Okay. All right, so made a second and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article 5, um, this was Lisa Clark's treasure collector, um, suggestion. I will entertain a motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor? Um, I will entertain a motion to recommend Article 6.
Second.
All in favor? Article 7, this is the leaky, leaky roof. I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Article 8, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
About time.
Yep, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 9, UPS, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Article 10, um, HVAC up at the fire, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? CPC, Open Space Plan, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Then we've got Article 12, which is the battery...
Electric battery.
Electric battery, storage, et cetera, et cetera. I will, I mean, FinCom, FinCom, um...
Referring to town meeting.
Yeah, referred to town meeting. I feel similarly. It's a planning board, um, article. I mean, I don't know that we have any expertise, like, they've had hearings and...
They use batteries all the time.
Yep.
It's got massages.
You're an electric battery expert, storage expert? Okay, I didn't, I had no idea.
You've changed a couple of videos.
All right, well, then, um, what, what do you guys want to do?
I want to recommend.
You do?
I'd like to recommend it.
I do.
Okay.
What is this all about?
All right.
It's just, it's electric battery storage and, and, um, set up in a, in the house, away from the house, protection from fire, you know, it's, they, they've talked about this.
Yeah, he did, uh, Tony did come and it's required. We need to up, we needed to update it to be in compliance with the current laws, so...
Is that for us or people's private property?
It's...
People's private.
Private property.
And are we worried about what people do?
But because we have rules, we have planning board rules, building inspector rules.
The house goes up in flames because of the faulty storage. That's a problem. That's what this is preventing.
All right, so did we...
Seeking to prevent.
I'll make a motion to recommend.
All right. Is there a second?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Article 13, um, oh, yeah, this is a, um, Community Preservation Housing, um, Technical Assistance Grant, um, that, uh, Community Preservation's already voted on. Unused funds will go back to Community Preservation. I will entertain a motion to approve, recommend, sorry.
Is it, what are we talking about here? Is this that?
This is that, um, there's a, a match and they need 10% from them. It's literally $955 from the Community Preservation Housing Reserve Fund. Yeah.
That's fine. So moved.
Okay. Okay, um, all in favor? Article 14, uh, this is the Care and Custody Conservation Commission, Open Space Properties, and I...
Which have all been voted on in the past.
They've...
Just registered them, right?
Yes, this was because there was a, um, this was already voted on at town meetings Yes, this was because there was a, um, this was already voted on at town meetings in the past and at select board meetings in the past. But for some reason, they were not registered with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, so this allows a housekeeping to make sure that the votes that have already been taken are duly recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. I'm not really sure why FinCom voted against that.
I so, I so moved, but they, they're afraid of taking, um.
Well, I mean, these votes were already taken, this is just a housekeeping.
They're afraid of taking. A land out of, of taxation.
I've been called.
All right, these date back all different, I don't even know who would have record, like, we, we got this list just sort of dumped on us, I don't know forensically that we could go back and figure out who was supposed to, when they were supposed to do it. We're just trying to clean this up.
And I mean, I mean, I remember the Little Cedar Swamp stuff my first year here. I remembered, I know that the State Street stuff is way before my time.
I mean, Gore wouldn't drive rare, I have no idea.
It's behind the Thomas Mill, it's Lambeau.
No, I know, but I don't, I, we've never talked about it since I've been on the board.
They're, they're at dates, we have, the conservation commission has the dates.
I know, but the, right, but she's asking, like, you know, do we have some recourse because somebody didn't do their job?
Right.
I think, uh, my, my uneducated opinion is there was a disconnect at town hall in falling through. Um, so I don't know that this is a case of attorneys not doing what they were supposed to do, I think there was some fall through lacking. Um, and, and, and I'm not blaming any one department or any one person. Um, there were a lot of hands involved in this because you've got conservation assessor, um, town clerk, town administrator, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, we're talking about years and years.
Is the question going to be asked, how much is it going to cost to register all this? Do we, is that?
Kate did tell us it was not a huge.
I don't know if we, I don't know if we actually got an amount from them, um, I know that they're, I, I know that they're working on it. Um, I don't think that we've actually got an amount yet because some of the properties they do have to look at, um, to make sure that the title was clear. Um, so I don't think we have an exact amount yet, um, based on which properties they have to.
We're gonna need some kind of a dollar amount, Lisa, I mean.
We can have something that day, because we can make a motion to, to either defer or recommend and then the day of, if we have to defer, like move, take, strike the article on town meeting floor because it's too much money, then we can do that too.
All right, let me see, let me see what I can find out.
I, I. I mean, yes, money is obviously critical, but this is.
Needs to be done.
Yeah, under, under, under the regulations, the state regulations for conservation property.
This needs to be done.
So let's make a motion to recommend.
It has to be done.
Make a motion to recommend.
I actually make a motion to recommend.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay.
Can we get a number?
But we need a number.
We need, we should have a number.
Yeah. Um, and if it ends up being huge, we might have to break it down into just a couple of the properties at a time, we'll have to see. Um, to see if the town will vote to transfer twenty-three thousand from free cash to replenish the conservation fund. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve. Recommend.
So moved.
So moved, second.
All in favor? Okay, um, and this was the easement, uh, that we need, um, next to the old firehouse. Um, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor? Um, and this is duh, 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 seventy-two thousand eight hundred from community preservation, open space and sixty-two thousand two hundred from undesigned preservation, uh, fund for one thirty-five to purchase the forty-five acre, um, parcel. Um, Ms. Green, um, has that parcel been? Um, have we done a, a, um, had somebody come in and estimate what that piece of property ought to be worth?
It, it's actually being worked on.
Okay.
Um, the, the gentleman who did the, um, initial appraisal of a portion of HOCSAB is working on doing the, um, the value appraisal of the property.
Okay, so it will have to be less than a hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred, um, or we won't be able to purchase it.
Yeah, I, I will wait and see what, what it comes back at, um, but he is working on that.
Okay.
And you already have an appraisal once?
Not, not, no, not this part of it.
No, it was a larger parcel.
We had the larger parcel with the two buildings on it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did a market value analysis on it, so an appraisal was done, but back in, I think maybe twenty nineteen.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, you guys voted not to recommend?
Yes, um, we felt that a hundred and thirty-five thousand would be saved on projects of the future that we have the space over there, like a tall building that's already costing us money. And we felt that we just want to take on more additional plans.
Okay, it's community preservation money. Um, which can only be used for very specific purposes, okay, just wanted to make sure you guys knew that. Um, okay, so, um, what, I will entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Oh, all right, I, I don't know, you were shaking your head, I don't know what was happening, okay. Um, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Yeah, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um. See if the town will vote to transfer, uh, this is for, um, yeah, various, uh, things.
Support the entry.
I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, um, Article nineteen, um, this is the, um, South Shore Technical High School Assessment.
Are we gonna have anybody from the South Shore, he's gonna be there, right?
Yes, Tom will be in there, yes.
Um, he's actually also gonna have a table at, um, Hanson Day.
Good.
So if people have got questions, then, um.
Because there are a lot of questions, but then when you listen to him, he explains it very well.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's very good at explaining. Um, okay, I will entertain a motion to, uh, recommend.
Second.
All in favor? Um, Article twenty, um, see if the town, uh, ba 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 ba, uh, this is restoring the conservation agent to full-time status of thirty-five hours. Um, you guys voted not to recommend?
So.
Three of one.
So for me, Article twenty and twenty-one, these are salary line items, which to me means we can't go back on this. I, I'd rather defer.
What's happening right now? Um, okay.
Why can't we hear the guy, he can't have his hours back?
I think he should have his hours back.
No, Joe's saying, let the town.
We spent three years fighting to get salaries increased and hours increased just to cut them the minute we got them, and I do not want to put a person in a position in which we give them their hours back just to cut them again.
Right.
It's not fair, so, and it's irresponsible. So, um, I think we should defer to town meeting, let the taxpayers decide where their money goes again, because I do not want to put people and their families in a position to constantly have to bounce back and forth with benefits and employment.
Right.
Um, okay, how do other people feel?
No, I agree.
I don't think he should turn his hours.
Hours are.
Yeah, hours are already.
I think he should have them back, why, people have to live, people have to eat, people have payments that they gotta make, you know, you guys, you get the money.
Okay, so what, where are you at? Because we've got to divide, we've got a board dividing.
It's hard because I was gonna ask that, because you, we're basically giving, we're doing it until when, and you know what I mean, then, the thing, Joe's not saying no, I think, I think you're saying, I just don't want to give it to him.
I'm not saying no.
No, you're not. No, he's being consistent.
As a chair of the wage and personnel committee, we fought to get all these hours, as a select person, we advocated and increased these hours, we got all of these things just to have them cut.
And then town meeting cut them, yeah.
So, it's, I, it's not fair, so, and, and I am not saying that we do not recommend.
This is not, not fair.
I think the fact that the hours were cut were.
He's saying yo-yoing people, like this is not fair.
Yeah, it's not right.
Right.
So I think we defer to town meeting, I'm not saying to not recommend because the hours are needed and, uh, it's up to the people to decide whether or not they want to fund that.
I, I agree with that, I agree with deferring because honestly, the conservation commission needs to get up and make their case.
Yeah.
About why they need their guy, and the Board of Health needs to get up and make their case about why they need their guy. And, and honestly, I didn't hear either one of those groups getting up at town meeting and making a case.
It's one of those things that you hear even about the transportation, right, that, that's falling in our laps and it's not even our decision. We didn't make those decisions.
Correct. Correct.
So it's, I, I, I love advocating for it, I think it's needed a hundred percent, however, I think it's the townspeople's money, it's their taxes, the very next bullet point is talking about an override. If it doesn't pass, we're cutting even more, it is not right, so we defer to town meeting, in my opinion.
All right, is everybody okay with that?
I completely agree.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to refer to town meeting.
So.
Uh, for Article nine, um, let me just make sure I get it, Article twenty and Article twenty-one.
And twenty-one, second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, great, glad we worked that out. Um, all right, Article twenty-two, uh, citizens petition, um, uh, we've already voted to refer that to town meeting because it's a citizens petition. Um, Article twenty-three, um, which is the, oh, the H four eighty-eight-five, um, again, we've voted to refer that to town meeting, uh, because it's a citizens petition. Um, so that, that wraps it up, we've already closed the warrant, so there's nothing more for us to, um, and were you folks here for a specific?
They're here for the executive session, for the cybersecurity.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, all right. Um, okay, great, all right, so that, that takes care of that, and then that brings us to, um, the, um, proposals for overrides, Ms. Green.
So, um, we looked at the proposal for Capital Strategic Solutions, um, which the, um, came in at a high figure, and so we looked at other companies, we did receive another proposal from another company. I mean, there was a concern where one of the members didn't even know what Prop two and a half was. Um, and another member was out in Colorado, most of their, when they, we got their proposal, the majority of the work was virtual. So they would conduct meetings virtually, put together materials and then present them to us to farm out and things like that. Um, not a proposal that really was gonna work for us. Um, we did have a meeting with the Collins Center and unfortunately they declined the project, so they did not put forward a proposal. Um, there's been so, there's been some new information with our certified free cash, our accountant is gonna come to the next meeting, so if you'd like to defer to the next meeting, uh, we could talk more because, um, our town count, uh, town accountant and myself feel that we could, we can actually do the work than bringing in a consultant, um, to do, to do the work for us.
And Ms. Green, I just want to, um, clarify something, there seems to be a bit of scuttlebutt out there that we're looking at a five million dollar override, I have no idea where people got this from, I know our consultant had like hypothetically said the potentially, like, if we really, really were getting aggressive, we would ask for a five million dollar override. Nobody on this board has ever even really entertained that as the dollar amount. Um, so I just want to make sure we're super clear about that. Um, we're not saying that that isn't, you know, um, incrementally that it may not end up getting to that point, but we know that we're just not at that, at that point now where we would even feel comfortable entertaining the dollar amount. And to be clear, when you're talking about, um, going out to somebody, um, you're not talking about, um, them proposing the dollar amount, you're talking about somebody who's gonna help us communicate the impact, where we're at financially right now and the impact if we're to propose an override, what would happen if the override doesn't pass?
Exactly.
In, information.
The problem is, is the scuttle in the town is that we're going to be pushing an override, that is not the point. I, I, I don't understand, I have to say this, I don't understand how people think they're paying more for their groceries, they're paying more for their gasoline, they're not getting paid anymore. They're, everything is going up, how are we as select board members supposed to keep the cost down to, you know, two thousand nineteen level? We can't, everything's going up, so it, it's not, I don't want my taxes to go up. I'm on a fixed income almost, not, I'm not quite there, but almost, I understand that, but people have to understand, everything's going up. Everything, so next year, if they don't want an override, and I completely understand why they don't want an override, they have to accept that we are going to have to do drastic cuts. And that's not a threat.
No, it's not a threat.
I, I will say, the other elephant that we always have in the room is dealing with the other side of the budget, which is the, it's the school budget, that, that's, that's another issue. We can't fight that battle, we can't do anything about that battle, other than, I don't know, listen and try to cajole them to realize that we don't, just don't have the money.
Well, I think that's where the consultant piece comes in, from my perspective, because the only thing that I'm hearing is complete misunderstanding and misinformation.
Absolutely.
About the way the budget and the finances are being managed.
I know.
Um, it is, and, and it's good, it's good people putting out their voices and trying to get their voices heard, but, uh, ninety percent of it is completely fabricated in every single way, and I think the only type of consulting that I would really feel comfortable entertaining going into, um, trying to figure out an override situation would be something that really kind of.
Lay it out.
Yeah, communicates the, the, the reality of how the budget is actually managed. Because fifty percent of our budget is literally out of our hands.
Fifty?
Well, you know, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be nice.
Yeah.
And then additionally, some of the services that are being cut are not because of anything that is controlled at this desk. It, it, it's not, so some of the services that are, and that's not to say that we, we can't have a voice and we can't advocate, we can't do all these things, but there has to be an understanding of, of the practicality of how this budget is managed.
They have to understand the process and they don't understand the process.
And, which is fine, I mean, like, a lot of people don't know, and I, and I want to give grace for that, but we, like, at the end of the day, we have to, yeah, and I think I'd entertain a consultant that helps disseminate the educational aspect.
That's what we were trying to do with the capital strategic, which was expensive.
That's why I like the idea of having us do it, because basically we just want to get the information that we already have out there, the facts.
Out there.
I don't want, I don't personally want a consultant that's gonna be leaning one way or the other. I would like somebody to just get the facts out there and let every individual decide based on the facts.
Yeah.
If we do an override, it means your taxes are gonna go up, if you don't, it means you're gonna lose these services. The, just the facts, not leaning one way or the other.
It's more so than the facts, though, it's like, because everybody wants to know where is the money going, right? So like, and, and I know you, you can't really, you can't really do it too. Um, you can't really, uh, figure that out line by line, dollar by dollar, but what you can figure out is like, of the money, how much is under the control of the school committee? How much of it doesn't, is under control of the Board of Health? How, what services are to, under the Board of Health, what services are under the school? What can we actually control? Um, not to, not to put blame or to like, like disperse the buck from being passed to us, but to really understand where, that, that's how people are gonna know where the tax money goes, like, that's, and who is the person that is determined to make it? Because look at us, but again, I'm gonna keep saying it over and over and over again, you have to vote for school committee members that, that, that think like you and are gonna, and are gonna advocate for you. Board of Health, same thing, these are budget conscious folks that have control of services, it's not just us.
Well, and I think also, one of the things that's been getting tossed around quite a bit is, um, they've, um, increased our taxes. Um, and it's like, well, we, we didn't increase your ta, your tax rate didn't increase.
Your house was.
Your taxes did increase because the value of your house has gone up, and that's just pure real estate math.
When was the last time we did an override?
You know? Uh, it was just.
Twenty twenty-one, yeah, twenty twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I was gonna say it was like on the cusp of COVID.
Yeah.
Um, and it was because there were all kinds of unintended, um, and unanticipated costs that the schools had and we really needed to, you know, try to buck up. Um, so, um, so anyway, yeah, there's a lot of misinformation out there and, and it's, um, it's so painful, you know, like I, it's so painful to see it, I'm not sure how much we can, you know, really help, um, get the right information out there, but I, I think we need to try, we need to do a better job of getting some information out there to people. Uh, there do, do seem to be a fair amount of people, I've seen in, like a new wave, I guess I would say, of people that are starting to appreciate how the budget works, how the decisions they make at town meeting impact the services that, you know, we get, um, but yeah, to Joe's point, um, you know, I, I think people, um, often think the select, I've, I've seen the select board blamed for the post office, uh, for the paving at Shaw's. Um, I mean, like some crazy stuff, um, and, and, and I get it, that's fine if people don't understand, but, um, but, you know, I think it would do us all, um, quite a bit of good if we could, um, help educate. And I understand what you're saying, Ed, about, um, you know, making sure that we're getting balanced information out there, that's always been our job. And even if, even if we weren't intending to do that, there are checks and balances in place for that. Okay, so the most jaded, uh, conspiracy theoried person can just rest assured that you've got the, you know, Attorney General, uh, ethics and all kinds of other people out there, including, you know, our town accountant, FinCom, attorneys and everybody else, there's checks and balances to make sure that we're not putting out one-sided information. It's never been this board's intention to do that, we're not gonna do it going forward.
I feel like we over explain a lot of things to the point where it's overly transparent, so at this point, like I've, you can't even make an argument, all you gotta do is sit here and watch two years' worth of, three years' worth of footage of us. I mean, you, you literally can't have any more laid out there for, for people, so, but how do you convince all of that into some, you know, some educational materials?
It would be a lot of work, it would be a lot of work, um, on, on a very small office. Um, but that's what we can focus on, but that means other items are gonna have to take back seats.
See, I could see hiring a consultant to help.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Well, that's what we were, that's what we've been trying to do, is help, is bring on someone to help us with generating the material.
But not necessarily a firm, a PR firm.
Um, and, and, you know, the spreadsheets that are gonna, that people will be able to fill in to see what the impact's gonna be. Uh, but if we don't hire anybody, that falls on this office and that means other things are gonna have to go in the background.
Where did Bridgewater go? Where, where did the talks with them go? Because we don't need to do like, to your point, we don't need like gloss, like marketing materials, we just need spreadsheets.
It's, it's a class of five students, so they're not gonna have the resources to do it, um, unfortunately.
What about reaching out to, um, Plymouth County, um, to see if they might have some ideas of people that we could work with or if they've worked with people? Because Tom, you know, does stuff like this, uh, you know, it's different, different lens, but similar things all the time. Um, and he has a lot of good connections and he's quite the little financial whiz, so I, I wouldn't have any doubt that, um, you know, Mr. O'Brien might have, um, some ideas, I, you know, uh, but, okay, um, so that was very therapeutic, uh, for all of us, um, or at least for some of us. Um, nevertheless, we do have an agenda that we must get on with. Um, did you have anything else you wanted to say about that, Ms. Green?
No, I'll reach out to Plymouth County, see if they can write in information.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, um, minutes, so.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Um, and one day liquor licenses. Um, now, Ms. Green, we have on here Hanson Historical Society craft fair, where are we with that whole situation?
Um, so they withdrew their, they withdrew the request for, to waive the fee. Um, the school has sent an email that they have no issue with it, um, I haven't received anything from town council yet on their thoughts.
Okay, so just, just to bring everybody else to speed, um, we had a one-off request that we've really never had, which was, um, a- aside from up at Camp Kewaunee, was for somebody to, um, serve alcohol on town property, um, at an event. Um, which on its face was like, well, okay, it's at a school historically. It's at a school, historically, um, um, Dr. Whitner would not have permitted any, um, alcohol. Uh, but, um, Mr. Simonek didn't have a problem and said that that was fine. Um, so then I asked Lisa and, uh, town council, have we got some liability here? Cause this is town property, and I don't know what, uh, who, you know, where's the liability gonna lie? Who's, who's gonna, if somebody misbehaves or gets over-served or, you know, does something, what, what's gonna happen? Um, uh, town council felt that it would be, um, uh, very prudent and really necessary for us to get some type of an agreement from that vendor, saying that they had their own insurance, that they were properly certified to serve and understood all the laws and legal ramifications. So Ms. Green reached out, um, and we hope to have something in place. Um, now, it's this Saturday, um, Ms. Green, so.
I'm just looking to see if maybe there was a response, and I might have missed it.
Can we do a tentative approval?
I think they are all certified. I talked to Jim.
Right, but we need an agreement. We need, we need the vendor to sign something with the town. So, um.
So can we do a tentative, uh, approval until an agreement is?
We'll, we'll do, we could do an approval, um, with the proviso that liquor being served is contingent upon the vendor signing, uh, the agreement.
I'll move that.
Okay. Um, do you have a second? All in favor? Okay, great. Um, and we've got craft fair, um, October eleventh. Um, wedding, uh, October twenty-sixth. Uh, this is quite a few craft fairs from the same person.
Yeah, what's going on with that?
Every month, once a month.
Um, is this person paying the full fee?
Nope, she's got three checks in here.
Okay. Um, I will entertain, uh, uh, November sixteenth. Um, December thirteenth. Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Um, any burning desire to give us economic, uh, any kind of committee updates?
Really quick one, just, uh, Tony gave us a really good presentation. We did take some, some votes to recommend to the board to get, um, some playground features approved, so get some funding, um, for the area. So I was hoping just to get this on the agenda, very specifically, cause I will forget what I said this week, next week.
Okay.
Can we have Tony? And, um, we're gonna be talking about some of the votes and the updates.
So we want, um, High Street Park Committee.
On the agenda.
Update.
Unfortunately, I won't be here.
It's gonna be some good stuff, too. Um, but yeah, we, Tony's, um, really, really helped himself.
He's quite an asset. Um, all right, anybody else have any other burning committee updates? Um, that brings us to Town Administrator Report, Ms. Green.
Okay, I'm Chair, I'm Vice Chair, I'm head of the board. So, um, I did meet with, um, the Bridgewater State University Professor, uh, Dr. Melinda Tarsey Feingold. Um, I went to Bridgewater State and met the five graduate students who will be working on the project. Um, we talked about the project, uh, the survey, the areas of focus. It's, it, it's a very interesting class. There's, there's two firefighters. Uh, there is one individual that works for the state and one individual who, um, is brand-new to public service. Um, so, and then there was another, um, student who hadn't met, who, who didn't make it, who was running late that day, but did email me. So there'll be, there'll be, um, regular meetings through the next few months to develop questions and areas. Um, and then I will be bringing those to the board as the survey develops. And, uh, Charlie Baker and myself met with Christine over at the Food Pantry, um, to go over the pro, update projects for the ARPA money. So I did update the, um, scope and budget for the ARPA. Uh, I did send them over at least, and, um, now we're gonna be drafting, um, an agreement that the ARPA money, the full check will be given to the Food Pantry to handle the updates. Um, I, I kinda keep getting different directions. So as soon as I can draft that and send it to them, I'll see if that's appropriate and they accept it. So that what they'll do is they'll either send us the check to present to the Food Pantry to do the, the repairs, or we will do the repairs and then submit for reimbursement, um, in updates. And that's gonna include, uh, mini slips, mini splits, air conditioning and heating units, um, new flooring throughout the whole first floor, um, a updated refrigerator that have, that has the glass that people can see through, rather than opening the door and, and holding open. New freezer, um, new shelving for closets that they have just thing, kinda sitting on the floor. Um, and the other door that leads to the other room where they keep, um, other things, that walk, that stepway is, is, is really in deteriorated condition. So that will be updated with an ADA, um, stairway and ramp, and the door will be, um, again, modified for ADA. So we worked on that. Also, um, I updated the Prep Place Culver, um, ARPA application. We did get the new quote in for the new bridge. Um, the engineering company, Verdantis, did some borings to find out the, um, compaction of the, the mud and things like that. So, um, additional borings are needed, so we did get the update, uh, quote on that, which I did forward to ARPA. So now I'm just gonna wait and see it, where it goes, um, as far as the, um, review level on that. Uh, the Fire Department classified ambulance, um, they did ask that we reach out to some other vendors for additional quotes, which Chief O'Brien is doing. Once we get those additional quotes, we will send it over to, um, ARPA so that they can see we, that we got, um, many quotes. Um, and basically, we really need to get all of this done because we have to obligate the money by September thirtieth. We don't have to have the project complete, but the money has to be obligated by the thirtieth, so working diligently on that. Um, we've been working, uh, Tony DePrayis, Town Planner, Charlie Baker, um, Building Inspector Kerry Glass, Mary Collins. We've all been meeting and working on the modular addition to the Senior Center with the three hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, so basically, we are working with the company for the quote on the project that's gonna include the building. Uh, basically, it's gonna be a turnkey building. Everything is gonna be the plumbing, electricity, uh, windows, ramps, access, things like that. The rest of them, all gonna be done by this company, rather than us trying to piecemeal it all together. We've heard this now for several months. Do they still have a quote ready? There are, well, we met, we actually met last week, and there were some additional, um, there, there's some additional, um, items that need to be finalized, um, so, yeah.
I'm getting nervous, cause we're getting down here.
I am too. Let's get it, let's get it on.
And this is a reimbursable grant.
It's a reimbursable grant, but yeah, they're working to keep everything within the budget that we have.
A budget within the timeframe that we have.
Yeah, that's what.
The timeframe's important.
Well, this, this, this grant is not based on the M B T A, so this grant is not based on that.
But it needs to be done by the end of the year, right?
We are, we are working on it, and like I said, there's some, there were some finalities that the company needs to come up with and then put the final quote in, so we should be getting that anytime.
So when, when would we anticipate work to start?
Tony DePrayis has, um, brought in a company to start with the, the boring type of work out there. So we have that, um, yeah, so they've been out there. Um, that work hopefully will start within the next couple of weeks. And that starts the boring for where the, um, I guess, the legs, uh, or the supports for the building are going to be.
Is this gonna be architecturally simpatico with what we've got?
Yes.
Or is it gonna look like a modular add-on?
It, it's gonna, well, it's gonna look like a modular add-on, but it's, they've come a long way from what they used to look like.
Can we get a, a picture of what they're expecting sometime soon?
I will, I, I will ask Tony, I'll ask for, for them to send us some, some drawings.
I mean, I need therapy over what those modules up at the high school used to look like.
Yeah, no, they've come a long way since then.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, they've come a long way, um, since then, and they, they are looking much better. But yeah, so there, there are some, some, some final aspects that need to be worked out. Uh, town council is looking at the contract because some of the language in the contract does not apply to municipalities, so we need to modify and revise some of the language in the, um, contract. So it is moving forward, um, a, as quickly as we can get it moving forward. Um, also, we've been working with our treasure collector on the workers' comp audit, so that's underway. The Assistant Assessor position has been reposted. The individual that, um, was, was conditionally appointed, um, didn't, basically, um, did not accept the offer. The municipality he works for basically approached him and offered him another position. So, um, he decided to stay with the municipality's work, and so we, we've reposted it. Uh, our new Highway Director started this week. Welcome, Richard Jasmine. Um, he is working to meet all the hi, he's meeting with the highway staff. He's working with, um, current to get acclimated to all of the systems. Uh, we will have his email hopefully up and running tomorrow, um, but he's well on his way, and welcome to, uh, Hanson. Basically, just a couple of reminders, transfer station closed on Sundays now going forward. The two digital signs on each side of West Washington Street, just to advise that the road is closed. Once that, um, construction is complete on the roadway, one of the signs will go back over to the transfer station to post that message. Um, special town meeting, Monday, October seventh, Hanson, uh, Hanson Middle School, six thirty P M. And childcare will be available by the local YMCA. Um, I also, I will be out of the office, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Monday. I will be back in the office on Tuesday. I'll have very limited access to my phone. Um, well, I'll have my phone, but I'm gonna be in the company of four hundred race cars, so at night will be my best time to look at my phones. Um, so that concludes my Town Administrator Report for today.
Now, when is going to print with the warrant, when?
On the nineteenth.
Which is?
Is, uh, Thursday.
Okay, all right.
So we will, we'll get that, um, we will remove Kate's language, uh, from that and add the additional, um, explanations under for Article two.
Okay, so are you gonna be offset before Lisa goes on vacation with us? Okay, all right. Um, all right, anybody have any other questions? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn to go into executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section two, A one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than the professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual enforcement timeline discussions. Executive session pursuant to meeting, Open Meeting Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares litigation discussions. Executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A four, to discuss the deployment of, or strategy regarding security personnel or devices, e.g., a sting operation, cyber trust assessment. Um, executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A seven, to review and approve executive session minutes not to be released August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and we will not be returning to open session.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much.